Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and it's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for April 3rd, 2018. We're going to begin the meeting as we do each meeting with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mayberry is going to lead us in both, so I would ask if you please stand with me.
Shall we pray? Almighty God, Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to come to you through the power of prayer. We thank thee, Heavenly Father, for listening to our prayers, for granting our prayers, Heavenly Father. We thank thee for your love, we thank thee for your forgiveness. We thank thee, Heavenly Father, so much for this nation that we live in. We ask thee, Heavenly Father, that you bless this nation and certainly bless our community, citizens, Heavenly Father. We thank thee for the growth and the opportunities that you've given us in the past. We ask thee, Heavenly Father, that you continue to give those into the future. We actually, Heavenly Father, to bless those that are here tonight. We ask thee, Heavenly Father, that all the things that were discussed tonight, that you impart your infinite wisdom to each and every one of us, and that decisions will be made according with your holy will. All these things we ask in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry.
Here.
And Mr. Alexander is absent, but we do have a quorum, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Before you, you have the minutes for the January 16th, 2018 council meeting.
Motion approved, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second, by Councilman Fennell. Is there any, are there any corrections, changes, additions? Ms. Love says none. All right. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. This brings us now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting when you may come forward and speak to anything that is on the agenda for this evening. If you have something that's not on the agenda that you'd like to speak to, you'll have the opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting. I'll also tell you that there are two public hearings this evening. The first is on the rezoning west of Martin Lane. The second is on the preliminary master development plan for the Knoll at Fairview. If you have concerns about either of those projects, I would suggest that you bring those up under the public hearings. Those are items one and two on the agenda, so we'll be to them shortly. But at this point, I'll say that public recognition on agenda-related items is open, and you may come forward, introduce yourself, and give us your address, and you'll have an opportunity to speak. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Public recognition is open, you may come forward. And I see no one indicating that they wish to speak? Okay, come on, sir.
By this time, I guess I'm considered a regular.
That's okay. We'll welcome you.
Carl Newby, 375 Old Douglas Road. I am of the understanding that, and I would want this question answered, actually, that there's gonna be, that there is now presently 411 vehicles that run our road at this time a day. Four hundred and eleven. After this project is completed, the estimate traffic on this road is 11,000 per day. Eleven thousand vehicles. Now, I have a concern also, the beginning of this project, the number of heavy vehicles that's going to be on the road, and in my, I don't know what I want to say, just in my perspective, I cannot see this road holding up to these heavy vehicles. Concrete coming in, the amount of, well, all the heavy vehicles, lumber and so forth that have to be brought in, there's not enough pavement to keep this road from just breaking to pieces, considering the road base. So I guess that's another issue that I want to bring in, and I did not know about the 411 or so vehicles that come each day. That's probably pretty close, just from an observation standpoint. So it'll go to 11,000, so we need to keep this in mind, about the damage to the roads. And I've got a lot of other issues, but I do not know how to go about explaining those without the presentations being made. It's like, it's like I said earlier once, it's like shooting a deer in a dart. And so that's a little unfair situation that, from my standpoint, that's not, not really fair, but at any rate, it is what it is. So that's my concern. This road just will not take what's gonna happen to it, no matter who keeps it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that's wishing to speak under public recognition, you should come forward at this time.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to us. I'm Zeta Upchurch, and I live at 989 Chessleyer Way in Plantation Trace. Excuse me, I've been on the phone all day. I talk all day long, so. Our concern is with the Knoll at Fairview, and what is going to happen around our particular property. Our property is divided, or sits between, I guess I should say, Greenland Place and Brown's Lane. And then behind us, where the actual development is going in, it is on Greenlee Boulevard. The issue that the folks in our complex has is, one, if Greenland Place is developed to provide access into the Knoll, that's going to provide more issues within our particular neighborhood, and more traffic within our neighborhood, which we've been having problems with anyway, and we have been working with the police chief. It's also going to increase traffic on Brown's Lane. Brown's Lane is a major issue right now with traffic in and out of Fairview, Brookhaven and Woodhaven, and all the cars that are in and out. The road itself needs tremendous amounts of work. The ditch lines, the berm, needs work, and I know that the city does and works diligently. But there is so much traffic in that area now, that if we put another 211 units in there, 411, excuse me, units in that area, one of the problems that we see is that there's gonna be worse road breakdown, because we have a ditch line that our water runs, runs right through my property, for a matter of fact, onto Brown's Lane. And that area breaks down every year, and the property owners actually have to go back and work on it themselves to clean that area up, because the road isn't kept up well enough. And if we add that much more traffic for 411 units, usually two cars per unit, that I don't think that Brown's Lane's gonna hold up. So we either need to have a plan, a good plan for Brown's Lane, and a good plan for Greenland Place, in order to reduce some of that traffic, or not put openings into that community off of Greenland Place and off of Brown's Lane, so they have to use Greenlee, which is a minimally-used road at this point in time. It isn't that we don't want development, we just feel that that is too many units going into that small of an area. It's a great wildlife area at this point in time, and we feel that they need to use that area for more green space, maybe a nice park, something that can be done with it where, and it keeps our wildlife there.
Ma'am, I would ask you to introduce yourself if you're gonna speak.
I'm Michelle Simmons. I'm at 1384 Habersham Drive, and I'm the president of Plantation Trace.
Thank you.
So our logic is, if we can keep green space there, and just build up on the Greenlee Boulevard area, so that we're not using and over utilizing, I should say, our roads, because this is an extra expense. I know that the city makes taxes, and we all need tax money to help the city grow, and I get that. I'm not against the growth. I'm against how the plan of action is at this point in time. Because we have apartments going up, we have apartments going up everywhere around us, across the street, and what is it, not Savannah, but... Plantation. No, across the street. Kennesaw. All in that area, there's stuff going up over there, 411 units. It's not gonna hurt not to develop right there at that property.
I will correct you, it is 211.
Is it 211? Because we were told 411. And one of the other things that I'm very concerned about, we currently have the cottages that are behind, they're on the other side of Brown's Lane. Then we have the condos that are there at the corner of Brown's Lane, and, and behind the bank, just before you get to us. Those units have sold, the ones at Plantation cottages. It took them months to sell those. They sat empty, and Remax, the Laviolas, had them for sale. It took them several months to get empty units sold. Those empty units bring down property values. We've got cottages, excuse me, we have condos and apartments that are going in over in Fairview. We have condos and cottages that are going in over at Kennesaw. And as I said, I'm not against growth. I think we just need to look at it, and look at it in a very smart way. What is it going to do to the owners of the properties that surround it? Number one, we have to look at the road situation. Number two, how many people are you going to affect and drop their tax value of their home as well, because their property values have dropped? I just think it's something that the council needs to look at very, very clearly before they allow something like this. I'm finished.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for listening.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? I will remind you that there is a public hearing on the Knoll at Fairview, and you can speak at that time, and also the public hearing on the rezoning west of Martin Lane. Anyone else wish to speak under public recognition? Seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And that brings us to Mayor's comments. I do have just a few things to share with this council and with the public. First of all, we do have Gallatin City Hall open this evening in case of inclement weather coming in. It is not a certified storm shelter, but a lot of people may feel safer in our City Hall dining room, which is in the basement, than they do in their home or business. And so we would invite them to come and stay there. It is not staffed, you may bring snacks and beverages, and you may bring your pets, though we do ask that they be in carriers. And we've opened it in the past, but, you know, happy to be able to open that again this evening. There are a few events coming up. I want this council and the audience to know about the retirement event for David Collins, happening at Triple Creek Park. He, of course, is the Union Sem School teacher that has been teaching in this county for a very, very long time. That's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, the 6th of April. On Saturday, you have two opportunities to run. The first is the Bison Stampede, it's a 5K and 10K at 7:30 at Station Camp High School. If you run really fast, you can make the St. John VNE 5K, which is at Triple Creek, and it's at 8:00 a.m. There's also a very important cleanup happening this weekend. It's the Station Camp Creek and Greenway Cleanup. It starts at 2115 Long Hollow, and it's from 8:30 until 1:00. Also, some of our historical properties open this weekend, starting at 10:00 a.m. this weekend on Saturday. Trousseau Place, the Bloodsoforth Historical Park, and Wynwood will all be open. Trousseau Place is 10 to 2:00, the other two properties are 10 until 4:00. And then I want to make sure that everyone is aware of the Youth Job Fair. That's an initiative, really, that our Human Resources Director, Debbie Johnson, has led. It is a job fair aimed at youth for summer jobs. And so if you're a parent, or if you're a student, looking for a job for a student, we're gonna have many exhibitors there with jobs for the summertime and after school, and would encourage you to attend that. That's happening on the 12th of April, from 3:00 until 7:00, so they can come after school. We would love to have them there. That's all the events that I have to mention. I do have some recognition this evening. First of all, I'd like to ask that our guest from Germany join me at the podium.
What do you want to do at the end of the meeting?
We have a movie in a few minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, James, you want to say a few words? Do you want to introduce yourself and your folks?
So, Mayor, Council, my name is James Diddis. For the last 14 years, I've had the privilege of teaching English and German at Station Camp High School. I'll give the address, but I think most of you know where that is. This is the first year that our school has engaged in a, in the GAP partnership program. It's a partnership between our government and the government of Germany to provide short-term exchanges between schools here in the United States and in Germany. And we were so thrilled this year to become a part of this program. I introduce Frau Carole Abroux. She's the GAP Coordinator, and she's an English and German teacher in Ingelheim on the Rhine, Germany. Ingelheim is a city about the same size as Gallatin, that's, that lies about a Gallatin-sized distance from the city of Mainz, about as far as we live from Nashville. Also along a very beautiful river, you may have heard of it, the Rhine River in Germany. I don't know how it compares with the Cumberland, but we'll, we'll assume it's a pretty, pretty, pretty place. With her is Sebastian Roman. He is also an English teacher there, and two German students, Mona and Dirk. And we just, we've had them, our families have had them here for a week and a half. They've been in the United States for two weeks, and they're attending school at Station Camp for the next two weeks, living with host families here. And the cool thing is that our kids, when school gets out in May, will go and live in Ingelheim on the Rhine with them, and get to experience what school is like in a German high school, and forge some bonds. Now, you guys, I wake up every morning trying to think of how I can prepare our kids for college and for great careers, and there are a lot of great careers here in Gallatin, right, Mayor Brown? But there are also great careers outside of Gallatin and outside of the United States. And their presence in our school is really connecting our students and our community with a much more global focus, and that's something that every kid benefits from, whether they're lucky enough to go to Germany next summer, or whether they're just lucky enough to have kids like Mona and Dirk in the class to ask, answer questions, right, about what life is like for teenagers and what school is like there. So anyway, thank you for giving me a chance to introduce them.
Absolutely, my pleasure, and I wanted to present them. Welcome you all. I haven't had an opportunity to meet you, met you earlier today, but I want to say welcome. I want to tell you that Gallatin was named the nicest place in America in 2017 by Reader's Digest, so we want you to have some Reader's Digest, but we also brought you this. This, you may have seen on our city streets, it is the Reader's Digest Nicest Place in America banner. So I just want you all to have one of those. I hope you have somewhere in Germany, you may display it. And, Council, you want to recognize these folks and say thanks for coming to visit us? Let's give them a round of applause.
Yep, and then, yeah, first of all, of course, thank you very much, so to allow us being here, basically. And of course, thank you very much for hosting us here in your beautiful city of Gallatin, basically. And, well, today we had a walk around Gallatin, we were shown around, and so on, and, well, what is it that we have to say? We are pretty sure that you guys deserve the title. Yeah, so the, it was definitely right to do so. And of course, we brought a little gift as well for you, and...
Oh, beautiful.
Well, I guess, well, just perhaps one explanation. I guess all of you recognize the German flag. But there's perhaps a little addition, as you can see at the top left corner, which represents our federal state. In German, we say Rheinland-Pfalz. In English, I think it is Rheinland-Palatinate. So that is our federal state, basically, in Germany. Well, you can see a cross over there, which basically represents our Christian beliefs as well. The line represents some kind of power, which is quite often to be found in German signs, basically. And at the top of there, you can find a little wheel, which is connected to a man called Gutenberg. You may have heard of him. So he was basically the inventor of pressing, and so on. So, and, yeah, basically, back then, coming up with the first Bibles, and so on, and so on. And Mr. Gutenberg was born in Mainz, basically, and so that is why we've got that sign in our little symbol of the He-Rhine-Palatinate, basically. So we want to give that to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's nice to meet you all. Nice to be in here. It was really a great dinner. Thank you. My pleasure.
I told them they probably didn't want to stay for the whole council meeting. And at this time, I didn't see him, but I saw some people, I thought, I see him now, Mr. Fred Bailey. Would you come up here, please? I know, I know. Mr. Bailey always gets upset with me. I am a terrible leader for the blind, apparently.
That's what I tell her. Thank God she's mayor and not a mobility teacher.
And I agree with him on that. But I want to tell you, Council, the reason that we're recognizing Mr. Bailey today, and Children or People, is because today is National Service Recognition Day, and for years volunteer state community colleges had a day where they recognized nonprofits in each community. This year, they didn't do it, but we still felt like it was very important to recognize this day, and recognize what we know to be a wonderful nonprofit in our community. So I'm gonna read a proclamation, and then I'm gonna read something else, and then I'm gonna let you say a few words, Mr. Bailey. So what this says is, "Whereas, on April 3rd, 2018, the City of Gallatin joins other cities and counties to celebrate the sixth annual National Service Recognition Day, to spotlight the positive impact volunteer programs and nonprofit organizations have on individuals within our communities, and to thank those who serve. And whereas, since 2001, Children or People, Inc., CAP, founded by Fred Bailey, has served more than 600 disadvantaged children in the community through tutoring, mentoring, and guiding them to become more successful. And whereas, Mr. Bailey, a native of Gallatin, was one of 15 children raised by sharecroppers and attended Tennessee School of the Blind and Tennessee State University. And whereas, Mr. Bailey has extensive and impressive work and nonprofit experience, and has received many awards and recognition for his volunteerism and community service. And whereas, Fred Bailey is a kind and brilliant man, and a wonderful and encouraging speaker who motivates many. And whereas, the City of Gallatin would like to thank Mr. Bailey for his service, and CAP for the remarkable difference it has made in so many lives. Now therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby honor and recognize Fred Bailey and Children or People, Inc. on National Service Recognition Day, and encourage citizens to volunteer and thank those who serve." Now I'm gonna hand you this, and, and over there, they're gonna take a picture of us.
You taking it, okay.
Over there, yeah.
I don't want to look like I'm looking for the eclipse.
You don't have to move, you don't have to move. All right. Now, if it's okay, I can share this letter that Susan posted today, right? Okay. Yeah, this happened today. So it means that we're gonna be doing a key to the city for Mr. Bailey someday in the future. But this says, "To all who believed in Fred Bailey," and this was just shared a few hours ago on social media. "Almost 18 years ago, I had the idea that young people and families that were marginalized could soar to greater heights with the right push and the wherewithal to stay the course within that push. The strides and successes that Children or People has made prove that my hypothesis was correct. Coming up with the idea was easy, but if it were not for the many board members, past and present, churches, businesses, and caring individuals giving their time, compassion, and resources, the idea may still have been just an idea. We have so many dedicated supporters that I cannot begin to name all of you, but please know that you have been such an integral part of the success and the growth of the young people enrolled at Children or People, Inc. I was extremely fortunate over the years to build a dedicated, compassionate, and patient staff and group of volunteers to assist me in making these young people and their families all that they could be. I wish to extend my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you who helped move, helped me move Children or People, Inc. from a dream to reality. I ask you to please continue to support CAP as it grows and helps more and more young people. At this time, I'm moving from the role of Executive Director to the role of Founder. I will have a greater opportunity to market Children or People, Inc. May God continue to bless this universe, but more specifically and succinctly, God bless America. Thanks, F.D. Bailey, Founder." So that came out today, so he's stepping out of his role as Executive Director, and I want to tell you all, I've known, I've known Mr. Bailey a long time. We used to work out at the same gyms, and I remember him telling me, you know, what he did for a living, and what his passion was, and what his dreams were, and I remember thinking, well, that sounds nice, but it sounds really hard, and I just don't imagine that getting done, and he's done it. And I've been so lucky to be in the community to actual, actually witness the success. And the success with the students in that program has been phenomenal. I mean, you have still 100% graduation rate, and so many students go on to higher education. He's even had some students go to medical school, and I say it's a program that if it could be replicated across the country, we'd have so much more success for our young people, but I think really, a driving factor is the people that he mentioned. Certainly him, but his director, but also Susan, and then your volunteers. I mean, that has meant such, and I will be quiet now and let Mr. Bailey say something.
No, thank you, thank you, Paige. The letter says it all. If it wasn't for you guys, Gallatin, Southern County, men and women that's in here probably, it would still be an idea, but because you believed in me, and you got out behind Children or People and pushed it, that's why it is a success. You know, my, the staff down there, Susan, Susan is extremely creative. You know, she's about the only person I know I can, I can go out of the country and leave her in charge and never worry about anything. She, she's good at thinking on her feet, she's good at tackling problems, handling things, and she, you guys, I don't want to, I don't want to give her more work, but if you ever want something creative done, seek her, her mind works that way. I have, there's, there's not a creative bone in my body, you know? But here's what Children or People is about. It's about America, because I'm just continually, just, I'm, I'm growing just fed up with the way America is going. And I can tell you, it has nothing to do with the president. I don't care who it is, President Kennedy, Lincoln, it makes no difference. I've lived through presidencies through 1953, that's when I was born, and my position in life hadn't gotten much better or worse, depending on who's in that office. You're going to make or break yourself. Now, you're gonna need somebody to help you, to help get something into you, to help you be able to do that. And I'm gonna tell you, America, you can, you can disagree with me if you want to, America does not have a race problem, America does not have an immigrant problem, we got a character problem. That's what we got. We don't know what respect is anymore, we don't know what a work ethic is. When everybody was working, when I'm, I'm an old 50s and 60s man, that's where I'm stuck. When I, when, in the 50s and 60s, everybody had a job. We didn't know what an immigrant was, probably couldn't spell it, okay? But my father was right, he would not allow anything government anywhere near his teachers. I never saw her. It was Ms. Vivian Hayes, she was a music teacher. And this lady was big, big tall lady. I mean, I'm only like, nine or 10. This lady had me in a collar, taking me to the office. I wasn't walking, because my feet wasn't touching the floor, you know. And she said, "Boy, you either about to be blind or else." Well, that's the first time I ever heard that term, because I lived back in the sticks away from, the nearest family was about two and a half, three miles away. And man, I'm scared to death, I'm always scared of people back then. I was just, we were just scared of adults. She said, "You either about to be blind or else." And they took me to the principal, "What's wrong with you, boy?" Man, I didn't know from my mouth. Those of you that, from Gallatin and went to Union Elementary, you know BJ Hall. Okay? You know him. And so they took me to a doctor, and this doctor was, I remember him shuffling his papers and mumbling to himself, and he finally put him down. He said, "Hmm." This is like, 1962 or '03, somewhere in there. He said, "Son, you got a problem that we're just now learning about. You got retinitis pigmentosa." I mean, I was dumb as a rock back then. I could spell hog, cow, dog, that's what we dealt with. And the biggest word I could spell was tobacco, okay? And I mean, I didn't hear the word "blind" in retinitis pigmentosa. And I'm thinking about Ms. Hayes, and I'm thinking about this doctor. And we normally never question adults. We never, we just didn't. Whatever adults told us, that was law. But I mean, I'm thinking about Ms. Hayes, and I'm thinking, I don't hear the word. So I timidly, finally got up the courage, I said, "Well, doctor, does that mean that I'm blind?" And I could tell he was weighing, how do I answer this guy? He said, "Son, for all practical purposes, you're blind, and you will be blind for the rest of your life, because there's no cure for this." I said, "Thank God." Now, I know he's saying, "Why is he thanking God for being blind?" Well, I've been blind for like, nine or 10 years, it didn't hurt. But if I'd have gone back and told Ms. Hayes I wasn't blind, everyone was going to beat me to death. You know? I got back to school, she was waiting on me. She said, "What's wrong with you, boy?" I said, "They told me I was blind." She spun on her heels and left. But my life took off when I went home and told my daddy. And you got to know him, too. He was an alcoholic. He was volatile. We were extremely scared of him, 15 of us. And we were extremely scared of him. And we stayed out in the woods most of the time until we thought he was asleep. Then we came home. But I guess I forgot, and I left my guard down, I told him. I said, "Hey, Dad, they told me I was blind today." I'll never forget, he got up off the couch, where he was most of the time, kind of took his finger and pushed me against the wall. He said, "Okay, let's get a good understanding, so it won't be any mistakes." And that you, when he usually, that was his famous line, that usually means you're finna get your hair knocked off. He said, "Okay, so you're black, you're blind, and you're poor. He said, "You only got two ways out of it. Don't listen to your mother, don't listen to your father, even your teacher. You only got two ways, not three, two. Think a lot of yourself, number one, and work like hell." He said, "Now, I just taught you how to survive. He said, "Now, you practice those two things, you're going to keep a roof over your head and food in your mouth for the rest of your life, just practicing those two things." He said, "Now, if you're able to get an education along with that, you'll know how to handle the blackness and the blindness." Guys, that was 55, 56 years ago, and I haven't looked back since. So when I hear all the bellyaching around this country, I want you to shut up, because I don't have time to listen to it, and I don't have time to be politically correct about it. Keep your mouth shut. I want Americans in this country, I don't want any Afro-American, I want, I can't find my way in here. Do I have any business in Africa? I can, can you met me in Africa? I can't get out of here. It's crazy. I'm a full-blooded American. I will be 65 July the 3rd, and if I can't be full-blooded like that, then I guess I never will be. But you will not call me an African-American, you will call me Fred Bailey, or Mr. Bailey, I'll answer to those, too. Paige, let me say thanks to you, Gallatin, and Sumner County, because you guys have made Children Are People what it is, and you have given Ms. Supra and myself what we needed to do our jobs. And I appreciate you guys. I hope you will continue to support that organization, because if you will talk to some of those kids, you will know those kids have been trained, you know those kids have been dealt with, and it's sinking in. I mean, we got kids down there that's writing, that's writing messages to Vladimir Putin, okay? I mean, this is what we, this is what we're talking about. When you go down and talk to those kids, when you ask them about, "What does a pledge of allegiance to the flag mean?", they can tell you, "It's not a ritual. It means something." And so, let me just end by, you know, for the people from Germany, wir Gottesinnen, mein Freundin, aus Deutschland, I think that's right. All right. Thank you so very much, Paige. Love you. Thank you so much.
We'd like you, too. Thank you so much, Father. You're amazing. So amazing. Just standing ovation to the council. Welcome home. Thank you. I still say Mr. Bailey could raise a lot of money for Children Are People by going on the speaker circuit. All right, that concludes Mayor's comments, and takes us now to the regular agenda. And Children Are People, folks, you guys are free to leave now. You may not want to stay for the whole rest of the meeting, it will hurt our feelings. He's out of here. Have a good night, y'all. Okay, we're now on to the regular agenda, and item number one is public hearing on ordinance 018-03-18, and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin rezoning two parcels comprising 7.1 plus or minus acres from A agriculture residential district to R15 medium-density residential district located on the south side of East Broadway and west of Martin Lane, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on this, you may come forward at this time. Can't see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I will declare public hearing on ordinance number 018-03-18 closed. Item two is public hearing on ordinance 018-03-19, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, approving a preliminary master development plan for the knoll at Fairview, consisting of 211 attached dwelling units for areas 1 and 2 of parcel B of the Greensboro Village Plan Unit Development, authorizing the PMDP to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is public hearing.
Public hearing is now open. You may come forward and speak if you wish.
Good evening. My name is Martin Bass. I live at 1384 Harrington Drive, in the Plantation Trace subdivision. And I want to first thank the council and the mayor for responding to my emails regarding my concern about the knolls being developed behind our subdivision. I'm a native Tennessean, I was born near Memphis, outside of Memphis, and Tennessee is precious to me. And I've kept migrating northeast all these years, been in middle Tennessee for over 20. I've lived in Memphis, I've lived in Jackson, I've lived in Franklin, also Nashville, and Hendersonville, too. And I'm wanting Gallatin to be my last home before God takes me home. And I really appreciate the camaraderie in this council and with the mayor, because this is a special place. Having a small-town root in Whiteville, Tennessee, I was the mayor's son, and also my grandfather was the first general sessions judge of Hardman County, Tennessee. So Gallatin is now my home. A lot of my family has passed away, and I want to stay here and live here, and feel a part of the community. I own a business here, my wife and I bought a home in Gallatin, moving from Hendersonville three years ago. We're happy to be here. We don't want to lose our small-town flavor that I appreciate as a native Tennessean. And I'm not going to continue to tell everything that's been told. I've emailed all of you all about the struggle with wondering how Brown's Lane is going to be maintained, with there being an entrance with the knolls onto Brown's Lane. I don't see how that's going to be feasible. I know that Green Lee is a more appropriate place to actually have an entrance or exit for that. But I just ask you, if we're going to grow as a community, let's plan our infrastructure in such a way that we still have green space, that we're still having a feeling of a small-town, which I relish and appreciate. I wouldn't have left Nashville if I wanted to live in a big city. And I also want to ask you guys to just consider the fact that we want growth and we want change, but let's don't sacrifice some very important things in that process. Let's don't sacrifice having the small-town feel, and also having the opportunity to be neighbors and know one another. I do not fault good all. They built our home, and it's a good home, and I'm not here to gripe or complain. I'm just here asking you guys to consider whether or not the knolls is the best, in the best interest of southwest Gallatin for all. I'm concerned that grassland already is booked, very, gets very congested. Right now, that MARTA is there, I hear MARTA may be leaving, but the first and the last part of the month, I have to call the police to ask them to clear the streets, so we can get out that entrance into Nashville Pike. I'm concerned that Brown's Lane may become that sort of scenario, if that is an entrance there for the knolls. I know the knolls very well may be built there, but if it is, please consider not having a Brown's Lane entrance. Please consider it being a Green Lee entrance, an exit only. And please leave us some green space, as we want to walk down Green Lee and experience some trees. And if there are any deer left, that we can maybe see a few of them. I appreciate this, counsel. It's a hard decision and a tough decision, but as a native, as a native Tennessean and a Gallatin resident, I just ask that you be sure our infrastructure is in place before you add more housing to that particular area. And I just appreciate your time today, and thank you for letting me speak. And I do ask one more thing. If grassland is opened up as a throughway, that there'd be better control over that traffic, if it is going to the theater, back to Nashville Pike, because right now, it does get congested if MARTA does stay. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Anyone else wishing to speak on this public hearing? See no one indicating that they do, so I will declare public hearing on ordinance number 018-03-19 closed. Brings us to item three, which is the second reading on ordinance 018-03-17, and Councilman Mayberry is recognized.
Thanks, Paige. This is an ordinance appropriating $980,000 for what I call the Bill McCord Nashville Pike Sidewalk Grant. Whereas the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, is a platform, was awarded the Nashville Pike Sidewalk Grant, the project will cost $980,000, and it will be an 80/20 grant, using 80% federal C-MAC dollars and 20% of our dollars from the general fund. And whereas $500,000 is already appropriated for sidewalks, which is in our sidewalk grant account, and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, that the sum of $480,000 is hereby appropriated to the sidewalk grant account. And be it further ordained that $784,000 is appropriated to revenue account number, which is the state grants account. Motion to approve, Paige.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 018-03-17. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four, second reading on ordinance 018-03-20, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance approving a waiver for fire suppression system tap fees, and to make sidewalk and road repairs for commercial buildings more than 50 years old that are installing the fire suppression systems, and I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 018-03-20. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item six is first reading on ordinance 018-03-21, Councilman Hayes.
This is an ordinance appropriating $6,840 from revenue received from insurance for damage to light pole at Green Lee Parking Rad. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance number 018-03-21. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item seven is first reading on ordinance 018-04-23, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Paige. This is an ordinance appropriating funds for the improvements in the Far Away Hill subdivision. I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Camp. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 018-04-23. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item eight, and Councilman Alexander had this one assigned to him, I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor Overton if you would take this. It's ordinance 018-04-24.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance appropriating $15,000 from a donation for cemetery project, and I so move.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Camp. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 018-04-23. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item nine is resolution R18-03-22, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing a mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Sumner County and the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, concerning the annexation of Langford Farm Development Parcel. I so move.
There's a motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion?
Yep.
Councilman Mayberry, you're recognized.
I don't know if this is a bill or Susan request. As I've made no secret about, it, on those parcels, that being Peach Valley Road and the two or three other roads that are Station Camp, that are part of this agreement, or proposed agreement going to the county, these roads still stay, even though, and we're obliging ourselves to financially keep these roads maintained. My stumbling block on this particular agreement would be us improving those roads as a county road. I would be much more agreeable to the contract if legally, we could put in there, subject to the counting, requesting the city to recommend those roads, and we annex those sections in, I'm talking about Peach Valley and the three that's on Station Camp. I don't know if that's legal, or could be made a part of that, but if we're going to maintain it, put city tax dollars into those roads, and certainly those on Station Camp need to be, need to be improved, they're awful rough, that it be a city street, rather than a county road in between two city streets, because the city is on either end, and that becoming a condition of this agreement. And I don't even know if that, with state law, is agreeable.
I'll ask Susan to address it, but I don't think we can annex it. I do want to tell you, Station Camp is being paved by Gallatin and by the county right now.
Okay.
I will address the legalities, but I think Bill has some information.
Okay.
We had contemplated that occurring. What has to occur, though, is that the owner of the property has to petition. We think it's pretty clear that the county owns by deed the Station Camp road sections. The Peach Valley Road is unknown at this point. But if at all possible, I think that would be a good idea, that if we can annex the property, and they are, let's say, fee simple rights of way, then I'm sure the county wouldn't oppose that. Those segments are contiguous to the existing city boundary, so the issue of creating another interlocal agreement, just to annex the roadways, wouldn't occur. But that's certainly something I'm not opposed to at all. I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and get it, and it would create possibly one or two other parcels that would be contiguous to the city as well.
Bill, have you discussed this with anyone at the county, the annexation of the roadways and right-of-way?
We had, but because of the issue that came up, that the ownership of the roadways, if in fact is partially owned by the adjacent property owners, if that's the case, then that complicates the matters.
Well, we know that's the condition on Old Douglas. That's a-
maintain it, put city tax dollars into those roads, and certainly those on Station Camp need to be improved, they're awful rough, that it be a city street rather than a county road in between two city streets, because the city is on either end, and that becoming a condition of this agreement. And I don't even know if that, which state law is agreeable.
I'll ask Susan to address it, but I don't think we can annex it. I do want to say Station Camp is being paved by Gallatin and by the county right now.
Okay.
I will address the legalities, but I think Bill has some information.
We had contemplated that occurring. What has to occur, though, is that the owner of the property has to petition. We think it's pretty clear that the county owns by deed the Station Camp road sections. The Peach Valley Road is unknown at this point, but if at all possible, I think that would be a good idea that if we can annex the property and they are, let's say, fee simple rights of way, then I'm sure the county wouldn't oppose that. Those segments are contiguous to the existing city boundary, so the issue of creating another interlocal agreement just to annex the roadways wouldn't occur. But that's certainly something I'm not opposed to at all. I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and get it, and it would create possibly one or two other parcels that would be contiguous to the city as well.
Bill, have you discussed this with anyone at the county, the annexation of the roadways and right-of-way?
We had, but because of the issue that came up that the ownership of the roadways, if in fact is partially owned by the adjacent property owners, if that's the case, then that complicates the matters.
Well, we know that's the condition on Old Douglas. That's a give me. I'm just talking about these other properties, which you're pretty sure.
Peach Valley is the same. I think Peach Valley, I think what Mr. McCord is saying is that Peach Valley is the same, that it is not owned by the county.
Okay.
And so we would have this exact same issue where the annexation request would have to come from the owners that own the land and fee simple under the road.
Okay. Well, let's leave that as is. What about the parcels on Station Camp?
Well, that roadway is more recent, and so there are deeds where the county had acquired the right-of-way for that road. So I don't foresee that being a big issue. That probably something that we can do. We would need to get that deed from the county, deeds from the county to verify that, but I'm pretty sure. I've seen some construction plans that show the rights-of-way and the dimensions of that right-of-way, and I can ask the county road superintendent if she can provide us copies of that.
And I also noticed that you were somebody put in the agreement that the City Department of Electricity would light those roads within a year, which is fine. My just thought is, I'd rather for that right-of-way to be owned by the City of Gallatin right-of-way than the City of Gallatin have imposed in a county right-of-way. If we got the request from the county to light them, which under this agreement we'd be obligated to do, which is fine, that's no problem. Probably does need lighting, especially down there on Station Camp Road because of the traffic down there.
So Councilman Mayberry, are you making a motion that the agreement be amended?
I've got two, I've got another question as far as procedure.
Okay.
If this document were to be approved tonight, it go to the county, county were in agreement with it, then it would come back to the city. What are the next steps beyond this agreement for annexation of the property and to approve the subdivision? Are there still more votes to go to annex?
Yes, there are. We haven't had the annexation vote yet, so prior to annexation, the interlocal agreement must be approved. That's the condition for a non-contiguous property. Then it will come back to the city on the annexation itself.
And don't we still have to have a public hearing on interlocal?
Yes, we still have to have.
And we have to have a public, have we had the public hearing? I know we haven't had the second reading.
I don't think we, no, we have to have a public hearing and then a second, a second reading. So there's still several, we've got a lot of steps to go with the county, and then we'll have several steps when it comes back to the city.
For public votes here for this thing to go up or down at that point?
Correct.
Whether the subdivision goes in or not, I'd still like to have those roads annexed, to be honest about it, because Jimmy, you remember the issue we had a long time ago?
Well, of course, this, you know, this is subject, is contingent on the annexation, you know, for this interlocal agreement.
But we could go down that road at a later date if this were not.
Because I'm not 100% sold yet on the annexation part of it. And if I voted for this, I'm certainly not agreeing at this point, playing my hand to vote for annexation at that particular point in time, because there's still several more steps to go through.
That's correct.
And the gentleman, as far as I know, is 100% correct on the width of that road, which the county is going to be responsible for subject to this agreement, handling that much traffic. If that particular farm had a back entrance where those people had access to get out of the backway, which they do not, and that may happen at some point in time in the future, but I have no problem at all with the development of the homes. I've witnessed thousands of those homes, and they're nice homes, just like Jim said. The quality of the subdivision will be there, no question about that in my mind. I've voted for every one of them for 22 years, or whatever it's been, and they all have been successful. It's just, it's just the infrastructure of that particular road that Gallatin citizens, 200 homes, average of probably 1.5 to 2 cars per home, are going to be traveling on that distance on a county road that may or may not be maintained as well as what we would do on how we maintain our streets, okay? So, subject to a lot of things, I would make a motion, though, to amend this particular And Susan, you may have to do the wording properly, but it'd be subject to the county requesting the annexation of the Peach Valley Road and those.
They can't, they can't be the Peach Valley Road.
Of the three parcels, of those three parcels on, is it three on Station Camp, two or three?
Station Camp.
Three, three short segments.
Okay. Three of those on Station Camp Creek.
Now, I will also add that when this goes to the county, they may make amendments to this, so it may come back to us yet again.
That's fine, because I love negotiating. Somebody says, "Or the deal."
So is that the extent of the amendment? Anything else you want in that amendment?
On that, no, certainly on this one, to, subject to the county requesting, I think it has to be on their request, does it not, Susan?
That's correct.
Those parcels that are on Station Camp, that we feel are, the road and the right-of-way, that we feel the county does own, unlike Douglas Ben, Douglas, Old Douglas Road, okay? So that is a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Mayberry?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, the resolution is now amended, or the resolution is now to approve the amended agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so takes us back to the original motion on the resolution. Is there any further discussion on it? We're seeing none. This is resolution R1803-22. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item number 10 is resolution R1804-20, Councilman Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution reporting, Jeanie Gregory is a board member of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency Board. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Kemp, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? This is resolution R1804-20. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item 11 is resolution R1804-21, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Dr. Sheila Parsons as a board member of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, and I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Fennell.
Mayor, I would like to introduce you to everybody here. She is here tonight. If you'll stand up and say hi to everybody.
Do you want to say anything? She did last week, so.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
All right, this is resolution R1804-21. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Welcome aboard, Dr. Parsons. And that concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I would ask if anyone on the council has any other business? Seeing no one indicating that they do, I have several road closures for you. So these are all from Greater Gallatin, and they are, they begin on April 21st, 2018, for the Fashion Crawl. That is from 12 until 6:00 p.m., and they're asking Water Street, from Franklin Street to Main Street to be closed, and the Public Square from Water Street to Main Street to be closed. Do you want me to go through all of these before you vote? You want to go through, me go through all of them and you vote on them as a whole, or you want to do them individually? Okay, guidance, anyone? All right, thank you. The next one is for Third Thursday on Main, so that starts in June. It's June 21st, July 19th, August 16th, and September 20th. That closes Water Street from Main to Franklin and the Public Square from Water to Main. And that, like I mentioned, was on Third Thursday on Main, that's from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. The next one is for Square Fest, which happens on April 28th. It will be closed from 6:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., and the closures are Water Street from Prince to Smith, Main Street from Boyer Street to Locust, and the Public Square from Water to Main. And then the final is for the Main Street Festival, which happens October 6th, 2018. Again, it would be closed from 6:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. That's Water Street closed from Prince to Smith, Main Street from Boyer to Locust, and the Public Square from Water to Main. So we do have the appropriate signatures on all of these, and they're pretty routine for this council. Fashion Crawl would probably be the exception, but. Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, they do pass unanimously. Thank you for that. Yes, yes, sir.
Sorry, I would like to put on a work session next week. Forgot the name of the street. It's between the First Baptist Church and the Old Post Office. What's that street?
Boyers.
Boyers. Can I put that on the work session, please, for next week? We want to, the First Baptist Church is asking us, can we close it on Wednesday night? So if we'll put that on the agenda, I appreciate it.
Do you need on the agenda, or they just need a road closure?
They just need a road closure. If they want to do it right now, I'm fine with it, too.
Well, I think we probably need to get a road closure form and give the department heads a chance for, that would be probably the best way to do it, so we can have the departments have their feedback and just your road closure form like they did.
Just on Wednesday night.
Like they did for Sunday mornings.
That'd be great, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask one question?
Of course.
Attorney, Ms. McCollough, where are we at with Ms. Scott? You remember the lady that was talking about?
Yes, we have had an independent investigator go out and do an investigation, and we are awaiting the report. We've got an initial report, and we've made some questions to him, and we're awaiting some responses, and we'll bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? All right, now it is time for public recognition on non-agenda-related items, and this is the time that you may come forward. If you have an item you'd like to speak to that's not on the agenda, we welcome you forward at this time. Ask that you introduce yourself and give us your name and address.
Hey, everybody, I'm Rosemary Bates with the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, and I'd like to ask Jennifer Easton from our office to come up as well. We delivered to you, fresh from the presses today, the printer, our new annual marketing book, and it is geared for economic development, so there are some things that you may not find in here, but this is primarily about what site selectors, prospects, new retailers are looking for, and we use this also primarily for people who are not familiar with Gallatin at all. The Chamber will have some, realtors will get some, but mainly, I wanted to bring Jennifer up tonight and let you know that she, this was her. Without her, we would not have had a book that looks this great. She's very diligent and true to our brand print. She's an excellent graphic artist, among other artistic talents that she has, but I just wanted you to know that she is really the person, this is her baby, and this is why it looks so good, and I wanted to thank her, and hopefully the city will thank her too for such an excellent product, so.
She did a beautiful job.
Thank you. If you need any, let us know. We can hand you some, and you can use them for business or promoting. Mr. Mayberry can even take some to West Tennessee to his partners over there.
Where's the mayor's picture in this?
The mayor's picture is in here several places.
Oh, is it?
Yes, it is.
But the nicest place, so.
The last one y'all did wasn't in there.
The.
She's even back here with us on the last page.
The, just a side note, but I have three posters from the Eclipse that I bought at Worthington Galleries, and I just found out that Jennifer did one of them, and her son did another one of them, so. I don't remember who the third person is, but anyway, they're great posters, so she's very artistic. But, but you did do a beautiful job, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? I think we have someone else wanting to speak.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is John Horn. My address is 138 Franklin, Christian Towers, the best place to see the citizens live, Gallatin, Florida. I am here tonight to ask, to talk about a group of people you may not know about, and that's the mental ill. If you look to me, can you tell I have a mental illness? There's a lot of people out here that think the mental illness is a stigma, that we're all bad people. Let me go on record as saying we are not all bad people. I was first diagnosed in 2002 with severe depression and suicidal tendencies. I have been under the care of Cleveland Mental Institution and Christian Towers. The problem I'm having with the mental illness people in this town is they are afraid to come forward and know how to have a mental illness, because they are afraid if they come forward, they all wind up in jail. That is not true. The people who are mentally ill are normal people, they just have a problem with the brain. So what I would like to do, I walk down the streets of Gallatin every day, and it hurts me to see all these empty buildings. What I would like to see done possibly is having somebody, somebody building, gutted down and make it for, make it for any mental ill as shelter or as a drop-in center when it's cold, when it's snowy. Because a lot of the people, a lot of the mental people will not ask for help, because they are afraid to ask for help. So what I would like to see do is I would like to have the buildings for the, for the mentally ill, a place where you can go mingle with other mental illness, they can get a hot meal, or they can take a shower and get some clean clothes. My last, I want to close up by saying these five words. Don't hurt us. Help us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items this evening? I think that was a wonderful way to end this evening's meeting, so at this time I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
adjourn. I hope you don't make it.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 1007 Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. This date starts the final quarter of the business year for the City of Gallatin. And by now, we know exactly how much extra we got over and above what we had last year on behalf of our tax on real estate. The figure that I was given was approximately 100, I mean, $360,000 more than we did last year. Folks, you need to have projects going on on our streets to widen the streets and put sidewalks in. This is the money that you need to be putting toward that. Therefore, when you get that finished, the property that we're working with on either side of that street will then be worth more, and it will be safer. Now, I'm going to come up here, we're going to keep talking about this until we get started on this project down the road. Now, I know that we've got other things we've got hanging fire. We can't get the federal boys to give us our money on, with regard to Hatton Track. I mean, there's a lot of things that we need to get going, including making sure that our buddy from Portland down here back here has a place to go to work out here next to his buddies from Portland. We're talking about Mr. Rogers back there. Need that building built out there and finished. But my point is, if you have something that you do every year, a little extra every year, take a little extra money and put into this, that we have, Eddie, that way we have it in the pocket, we're not going out here and borrowing it. This is what we need to do. I'll say $500,000 right now, starting right now. At the end of, at the end of this year, it'll be next year before you spend it. We're talking about the next budget year. So I suggest you folks get with the program. Let's get these, widen these sidewalks and put the streets in, and everybody be happy so it won't run over somebody. So y'all have a great day.
I still have four and a half million to cut, so.
Thank you very much, folks.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? All right, I declare public recognition on non-agenda items closed again. Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. All in favor, say aye. I hope everyone has a lovely evening. Stay safe this evening. Remember, City Hall is open. If you need a place that you think is more safe than your home, we welcome you.